My name is Robert Swanson. I'm alderman of the 5th Ward along with my counterpart Craig Maladra, alderman for the 5th Ward. And I'm calling the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, December 11th to order. Please note that all aldermen are present. First item of business is to approve the committee of the whole minutes from November 27th, 2017.
So moved.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Bruno. Any discussion? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Moving on to items of business. Item 3A, recommend approval of certificate of completion Aldi food store at 975 East State Street.
Still moved.
Moved by Alderman Cummings.
Second.
Seconded by Marks. Any discussion? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item 3B, recommend approval of certificate of completion Campbell Row Town Homes at southwest corner of Campbell and 4th Street. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Moved by Alderman McGowan.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marks. Any discussion? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item 3C, recommend draft resolution authorizing waiver of bidding process and awarding a contract to Tesca Associates, Inc. in the amount of $22,000 for assistance in the preparation of zoning ordinance amendments to implement the downtown station area master plan.
Still moved.
Moved by Marks.
Second.
Seconded by Cummings. Any discussion or do you have a presentation?
I do have a brief overview of kind of where this project has been as this is a proposal to continue it, where we're at and what the proposal is to get it completed. So the downtown zoning update project is really an implementation step of the downtown station area master plan that was adopted by the city council in 2012 and then amended in 2013. In that plan, there's many different recommendations, but it, some of those are related to zoning because it includes a land use plan which really shows our long-term planned land use for properties in the study area. In addition to that, we had properties that were kind of lumped together and identified as opportunity sites, and those are the sites that we have, kind of the illustrative development concept showing how a site could be developed over time. Our existing zoning regulations and zoning map was established in 1995, and that's the last time the city did a comprehensive zoning update. Since then, we've updated the map and our regulations annually as needed and as requested by property owners. So the downtown plan contains a lot of land use recommendations that were not really part of our vision back in 1995, and because of that, some of the current zoning regulations that were adopted in 95 conflict with the recommendations of the downtown master plan and really serve as barriers to redevelopment or reinvestment. So the objectives of this downtown zoning update project is to really bring that consistency between the master plan and the zoning ordinance, to remove barriers, especially if it's compliant with the vision of the downtown master plan, and then to streamline our review processes wherever possible without compromising the quality. So in 2013, Tesca and Associates was selected as the consultant through a grant we received by the Regional Transportation Authority. We began work with them in early 2014 with an advisory working group that consisted of aldermen, commissioners, developers, residents, downtown property owners, and business people. We also conducted focus group interviews. I believe there were seven interview groups total, and those interviews focused on how the current zoning ordinance affects operating a business, expanding a business, or developing a business in the downtown area. And the responses we got from those interviews were that the length of time for approvals is a concern. It takes too long to get through the process. The number of and process required for special uses is excessive, meaning too many, too many uses require a special approval in a public hearing before the planning commission. There were suggestions that staff should have more authority to make decisions on minor changes, and that we should have more flexibility built into the zoning ordinance to accommodate changes in market demand and use types. So as we were working through this process a few years ago, we looked at the opportunity sites and tried to identify where the conflicts are with the current zoning regulations. So this is an example of the Park Place site on the west side of 1st Street here, and then the 1st Street Row homes that were recently approved by the council. The zoning regulations that are in place now did not allow for the desired density for these projects, the lock coverage that was needed to accommodate these buildings and parking structures, the building height necessary for rear-loaded townhomes, and the maximum floor area ratio was too small for the planned buildings as well. So if the zoning had been updated, those relief items would not have been necessary with those planning developments. Other examples of barriers that we discovered going through the regulations a few years back, restaurants require a special use in the B-3 district, and the B-3 district is really South 3rd Street. I know many of us, when we think of South 3rd Street, we think of great retail shops and great restaurants. Eighteen special uses have been issued over time for restaurants in the B-3 district. So a special use is really intended to be kind of just that, a special use, not something that's typically found within a district, and they're very common within the B-3 district and really should not be treated as a special use. So that's a current regulation that serves as a barrier. It adds time to the process and cost to the process. Another more minor example would be front porches on single-family homes. We have regulations in our code that actually encourage them. We allow you to deduct floor area from your allowable floor area if you have a front porch, but we don't accommodate for the additional setback required for a front porch. So more than half of the variations we see before the zoning board of appeals are for setback relief in the front yard to allow a front porch, and they're almost always granted because it is a desirable characteristic in our older neighborhoods. So that's another example of a regulation that should be adjusted to reflect the desired land use. So with the grant that we were awarded and the work we did with Tesca, we resulted in the draft ordinance being put together. That draft ordinance expands the administrative approvals, expedites review for minor changes like site plan review, consolidates zoning districts that essentially have the same purpose, consolidates permitted and special useless into more general categories. For example, right now, we have to amend the code every time a new use comes in that's not specifically listed. I think we had the example of cosmetic tattooing a few months back. If that was deemed a like use, we wouldn't have to go through that formal review process to allow that business to open up. We're adding graphics and reducing the text to make it more user-friendly. We're really trying to work towards having each zoning district be a one-page kind of cut sheet with all the regulations you need to know, or at least cross-references to other sections on that page, aiming to reduce plan review time, and then we're focusing more on form and less on density, removing restrictions like floor area ratio and focusing on setbacks and building height, and then reducing the need for special approvals or PUD approvals. So that draft has been put in place. This is kind of an example of those one-page cut sheets, both for commercial or single-family properties, trying to have an illustration showing what the setbacks are, what the maximum building heights are, and then any other applicable regulations on that sheet. And this is kind of where the process finished up with the funds we had. Our next steps are to review the draft ordinance, looking at the existing zoning districts and the proposed zoning districts and finding out what those conflicts are, going property by property throughout the study area and making sure that the zoning is appropriate. We understand what the changes are, if it's more restrictive, less restrictive, and then really engaging the public in a review of this draft document and getting into the formal planning commission public hearings and ultimately bringing it forward for city council Just kind of briefly touch on these two. The map on the left is the planned land use in the downtown master plan, and the map on the right is the existing land use based on zoning, the current zoning. You can see they're slightly different, but if you kind of overlay the two, all the red are the areas of conflict. So there's quite a bit of change represented on this map, but I think it's important to note that not all of the conflicts are drastic changes. In many instances, we have zoning that is in place now that does not align with the buildings and uses that are in place. We have regulations that are out of whack with what exists today, and the desire in the land use plan might be to bring it into compliance. So it's not, that map does not only show drastic changes. And then this is an example of a property by property sheet that we've prepared. We want to go through each site and understand what the existing zoning regulations are and what the proposed zoning regulations are, the differences between those two, and really what the issues are or aren't for each property, and make sure that when we assign the new zoning classifications, we're doing them based on this informed analysis. So the completion of this project was identified as a strategic plan priority by the city council in the update we did in 2016, and then we discussed it again this past November. In April of 2017, we had some additional funds placed, approved in the budget for this additional consultant assistance. What we're requesting tonight is to waive the bidding process and enter a contract with Tesca, given their history on the project and the work they've done to date. I think we could see this plan through. With that, I'm available for any questions you have, and Khan Savoy from Tesca and Associates is also here and available for questions.
Any questions from the dais? Alderman Maladra.
David, how was Tesca selected the first time around?
It was through a request for proposals, and they were one of the proposals and evaluated amongst other consultants and selected.
And so the reason that we're not going through that again is so that they can basically finish what we set out with them to accomplish to begin with.
Correct.
Okay. And my only other question has to do with the public meetings that we're going to be hosting. It seemed to me from the packet that the public meetings were going to focus on business stakeholders exclusively, or will we be talking to residential stakeholders as well?
We have a few components. We have the advisory group that does also include residents on the advisory working group. The public meetings, we have budgeted line items and notice every property owner in the downtown area, so everybody will receive notice, residents included, for those public workshops. A lot of the focus group interviews did focus on the business environment, so I expect we'll have a lot of those same participants returned to.
Any other questions for David? Alderman McGowan.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry if this was just answered, but, or partly. As far as the site-by-site study that you mentioned, when would, what is the timeframe for that basically?
We haven't, we haven't put together the official timeframe, but we've already started work on two of the zoning districts, so we're going through that. I don't imagine that would take too long to get through, but we want to make sure we have that analysis done before we engage the public so we're able to inform them accurately about their properties.
So is the site-by-site study going to be done kind of like behind the scenes? This isn't something that, where you would contact the property owner and say, oh, just tell you know, we're going to be studying your property, or does that come later?
I think that's already underway.
Right.
And we'd be moving to complete that behind the scenes, but then have that information available so we can have informed discussions with each property owner.
Okay, and is this something that's going to involve public hearings, people that don't want their property zoned? Are you anticipating a lot of that type of activity, I guess?
Yeah, we wouldn't notice every property owner of the proposed changes. We're required to by state law, and it would require public hearings before the planning commission when they consider the draft formally, and they would make a recommendation of the councils. There would be multiple opportunities for public input. I think we've identified seven public meetings as a minimum.
Okay, thank you, David.
Any other questions from the dais? From the audience? Did we have a motion?
We do.
Okay. Thank you. Voice vote would be fine for this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3D, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of St. Charles, Kane, and DuPage Counties, Illinois, and the City of Geneva, Kane County, Illinois regarding water connection to Parkside Reserve's townhome development. Do I? Moved by Alderman McGowan.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. Any conversation? Alderman Rodecky.
Yeah, I guess I just have one comment. I mean, this is just a reminder about what a strategic advantage our water is. I mean, we have really invested a lot of time, money. Some of us risked life and limb on a flight many years ago to go look at these things, but it really is a bonus in our city. I think this is tremendous. You know, whoever can use our water, we should extend it wherever reasonable, especially when they're paying for the cost for it. But just a reminder about, you know, one of the basic things that we have in our community that I think is a real strategic advantage, so thank you.
Alderman Bruno.
Well, I think that's a very good point made by Alderman Rodecky, but I guess there's no one here from Public Works, but maybe Stephanie, this would fall under the umbrella of the water rates paid by these non-Geneva townhomes would, it's like 50% more or something?
I think that is correct, and this is not a unique situation. We actually have several homes along Gray that are also on city water that we, they get billed by St. Charles, but at the end of the year, we shore it up between St. Charles and Geneva.
Thank you.
Alderman Cummings.
So these, these residents, St. Charles residents will be paying that increased fee?
They pay their water bill to St. Charles, and then we rectify it with St. Charles, but it is a higher fee, correct?
It is the higher, okay. Thank you.
Alderman McGowan.
And I'm just curious, are there any Geneva residents that are tapped into like St. Charles water? And I think there are, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
But I think there are because there are different places where it's easier to connect to different, when we're on the borders, but I don't know for a fact. Do you know for a fact?
I don't.
I almost think there are, but I don't know for a fact, so I apologize.
I was just interested in finding out. Thank you.
Any other questions? Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 3E, recommend draft ordinance amending Title I Administrative, Chapter 8 Municipal Finances, Section 8 Credit Cards, subsection B Acceptance of Credit Cards, and subsection C Fees of the Geneva City Code. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
Moved by Marks.
Second.
Alderman Cummings, second. Any conversation? Alderman Ruby.
Okay, I wanted to discuss this a little bit. I like the idea of, yeah, Rita, come on up. I love the idea of cutting, cutting out the higher, the commercial customers. That saves us, you said 57% was the number?
Yes, the top three that are currently paying with credit card, yes.
Okay, so I have in an email here that Geneva pays an average of $23,800 per month in credit card fees, which I personally think is really high. It's a lot of money for residents to have that convenience. It's a lot of money for the city to pay. So I'm not suggesting this, I just want to have a conversation about what are our options as a city in either passing on the transaction fee to the customer, to the user, or possibly even just notifying our customers, you know, as of, you know, six months from now or a year from now, we will no longer be processing credit cards at all and not even giving customers that choice. And again, I'm not suggesting it, I just wanted to discuss it and see if there are any maybe compromises along those lines that we could reach to save more.
We do have the option to pass that customer fee onto the customer. It would take a two-part process to do that. We would not be able to charge exactly back what that customer is being charged because those rates fluctuate. So for example, if you have a cash-back credit card, that's a higher rate than someone's debit card, and there's, there could be up to a 2% difference. So what we'd have to do is we'd only be able to charge back the lowest percentage. So let's say it's like about 1.5%, and we'd have to just eat the other costs if we chose that option. Second reason why I did not recommend that is because staff would actually have to do two entries every single time a credit card is being taken. We'd have to charge the utility bill, and we'd also have to enter a transaction for that credit card fee itself. So instead of doing one entry, now it becomes two, which is obviously far more complicated and more staff time. Online, it would just be passed through, it would go on someone's utility bill, and you'd see it on the credit card statement. That wouldn't be that big of a deal. I don't believe going completely away from credit cards are the option because I think this is how everyone pays right now. It does reduce staff time. People can pay the middle of the night, 1:00 AM, 2:00 AM. This is why we invested in New World, and we invested in this e-suite product that allows people anytime, any day, no matter what shift you work, to see all your history, to see your consumption, to see your current bills, and to be able to pay that online.
And I would add too that the city actually gets the money faster, so there are some people unfortunately pay everything by credit card or whatever, but we actually see that income sooner. So it's not just a convenience for the city, it's a convenience for the consumer as well.
Is there a difference if somebody has auto-draft from their bank account?
Yes. So if we would go that route, if a customer would, that is pennies on the dollar for us. There's no fee, there's no fee for them. We are actually, starting January of 2018, we are starting a campaign, I would call it. The Fall Newsletter is going to talk about the ways to pay your city bill and encourage auto-draft, which is the easiest way for us, and also starting in January, you'll see, every bill will have a, other than bills that are already on auto-pay, will receive a form filled out. So all they would have to do is fill out that form in the bottom, return it with their utility bill, and we would put them on auto-draft at that time. So we are starting this kind of campaign process to get people to do that, and also to do e-bill as well, which is another function we have. You can, you can call us, we can sign you up online. The bill doesn't come to your house anymore, it just sends you an email, you know when to pay it. You can go online and pay it, or you can pay it, you know, via your bank or whichever way is most appropriate for you.
Okay, but if you're using your bank account as a customer, that's the same convenience as using your credit card, isn't it?
Depends on what your preference is, really. I mean, some people like going online, paying with a credit card, some people order debit card, which would be, you know, same process.
Well, like you referenced with the New World software, you can pay, you know, any time of day. I mean, the same is true with your bank account, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just, I know we can't force people to pay a certain way, but we have options. So just looking at how much this is costing the city, I feel like if people could use a different option, it would just be really, really nice. We say pretty please.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you. So in terms of cash flow, I definitely see the merits in credit cards. Is there any distinction between the automatic draft in terms of cash flow? We just, we just, it's just the instant?
Yeah, next day.
As long as they have the money in the bank account.
Yeah, yeah, there's that. How often do those automatic drafts, and sorry, I didn't run this by you earlier, how many, do you have a sense as to how many automatic drafts fail?
You know, it really depends. Sometimes it can be once every three months, sometimes it can be once a month. A lot of people, it's, it may not be that the funds aren't available, it's that with all this new, your credit card breach information, changing account numbers and things, they'll actually call us ahead of time, even though they may have not called us in time and said, you know what, I know you're in auto-draft, my account isn't open anymore, I'm sorry, and then they'll just replace it with a check. So sometimes we will actually get it ahead of time, and the processing isn't too much to replace that. I mean, we are very grateful that they do call us ahead of time, so we're not going to go find them to ask them to pay us for that, for that auto-draft.
I was doing a little bit of research on how to handle those. Apparently, some states, and apparently we've researched this, that we are allowed to pass that through, but it is complicated, but there is also the option of incentivizing somehow going to auto-pay, and I don't know if that would be a topic of discussion. I'm pretty good with what's proposed here. You know, we're already making significant inroads into capping the fees we pay, you know, maybe it's a good first step, maybe we can tighten it up later. Thanks.
Alderman Marks.
I guess that was my question, is have we considered giving a discount for using the auto-draft? I mean, if you switch from your credit card to the auto-draft and it doesn't cost anybody any money, have we ever considered just giving a discount for that?
No, we have not. That is something that we can look at.
Because that could, I mean, that could really save a lot of money if people just do that. I mean, because we're spending the money anyways. It sounds like if we give a 1% discount and we're spending normally 1.5 or 2, it makes a lot of sense to look at that. That was just my comment.
Okay.
Alderman Kilberg.
If I understand this correctly, then we're reducing the city's expenditure on cards then from about $23,000 a month, we're about, we'll be about $8,000 a month, right? And then we're saving about $50,000 a month. And then do you anticipate that those three major?
Microphone, please.
Been gone too long. Do you anticipate then that possibly those three major accounts, major users may end up going to ACH?
I believe they would. ACH or just going to a regular check. One of the companies did use ACH in the past a while ago, so that could be an option, they could go back to an ACH.
And have we alerted those three users already that this action's pending?
Whatever the council decides.
That's why the delayed implementation date.
Right, I understand.
To give plenty of time.
Yeah. Okay.
Since you're, you're basically talking three out of 10,000, 8,000.
I know, three out of 21, 2200.
2,100, I remember.
I just wondered though, you know, if we'd alerted them that was on the agenda tonight, it might have been helpful because then we'd have been a little bit further ahead of the process than after the, after the fact where they're trying to catch up. Just a thought. Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky.
Thank you. I think this makes a lot of sense. I mean, I think it spreads the unhappiness evenly. I like the breakpoint. The only thing that I would, you know, as far as people using credit cards, I mean, this is a convenience that, first of all, this is ratepayer paid, you know, the bottom line, everybody shares in this. This is a convenience that we offer to people, and you can take advantage of it. If you want those points on your card, if you want it, I mean, you can do this yourself too. So I think the breakpoint makes a lot of sense to me. I guess the only thing I would, you know, I would consider would be moving the date up perhaps to March. I mean, Alderman Kilberg makes a point about the three people that will be affected by this, but I mean, it's December, we let them know, you know, I think it makes sense to move it to the most practical date possible, yet respecting, you know, notifying the three people that this is going to affect. But I think this makes a lot of sense. I think it hits a sweet spot, and like I said, it spreads the unhappiness evenly for a lot of folks, and it's a good convenience that's, you know, shared by all the ratepayers. So, good job, thanks.
You brought up a topic that I thought of as well, and I was going to propose a friendly amendment that we move up implementation to March 1st. I also would change the cutoff to 2,000. I believe our average bill is less than $500, and so by having a $2,000 cutoff, we still let the vast majority of customers pay via credit card, and they're not subsidizing the big users getting points on their credit cards. So I offer that as a friendly amendment to move up implementation to March 1st and change the cutoff to $2,000. I think we would save more money, and we would start saving it more rapidly.
Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. Before, may I make a comment before we ask for a second?
Ron Persules of order does not permit that. Now it's been seconded. Yes. Seconded by Rodecky. Now, yes.
So, um, did I hear that as a municipality, we're not allowed to pass on all the credit card service fees to the users?
We can, but the situation is, is I don't have the, I don't have the availability to charge exactly what they have been charged.
Because of the fluctuating rates that you mentioned?
So, I'd have to choose the lowest rate that, that the lowest card is charged and charge that to all users.
I guess my standpoint is that if it's costing the city extra money to run credit card transactions, that we really should pass, I'd be in favor of passing a hundred percent of that on to the users because we're still offering them the convenience. Although you did mention that it, it causes a lot of extra administrative work, and I'm not really sure why that would be. Or is, is there a way that we could find an easier way to do it? I mean, I, I don't, I don't mean to pick on the school district, but Geneva 304 charges, and on their website, shoot, I just had it, they charge a percentage of all transactions plus a twenty-five cent per transaction fee. So, it sounds like they've kind of picked a number that... And I guess, you know what, maybe, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if that would cover like a hundred percent of the service charges for the school, but I think people are becoming more and more accustomed to having to cover, especially for, you know, we're a city, we're trying to save money. It doesn't sound right to me. I guess I'd agree with Alderman Ruby and others that we're paying like tens of thousands of dollars a year just to cover, cover people's credit card services. Meanwhile, they're benefiting from all these perks that, you know, we are footing the bill for essentially. So, I, I'd definitely be in favor of, of your motion, Alderman Swanson, just because it's getting closer to where I think that we should be. Thank you.
Alderman Ruby, then Cummings.
Rita, what, what did you say the breakdown was? What, why did, how did you arrive at the five thousand number?
Because there's a large, basically, cut between everything above five thousand and below. If there's someone around five thousand, it's been customers that typically don't use credit cards. So, for example, they'll be paying by check, 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 credit card, check, check. So, I believe that's probably someone that maybe missed their AP check run or something like that, and then are, or just fell behind and went, oh, I forgot to pay, and then go online and they pay. So, that's why I did do that, I did that breakdown, because there's a large swing. Goes from, you know, the highest as, as a typical residential bill, you know, two hundred, zero to two hundred fifty, and then it goes down dramatically.
Okay. So, do you think there would be a big difference in who's affected if the amount is two thousand versus five thousand?
It would be, on an average month, about sixty-five customers.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings.
First of all, I, I love the numbers. You're recommending a change that affects one, one thousandth of one percent of the current customers and saves the city fifty-seven percent on the fees. That's, you know, you take that ratio all day long, right? And so, my next question, and I don't, I don't have my thing on the calculator, but, so if we went to two thousand, we, inconvenience, sixty-five additional customers, so sixty-eight total out of tw, how many?
Twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred. And what percentage, what additional money would we save by going to two thousand, do you think?
I did a high and low, because as I said, we don't know exactly what these people and what type of cards are using. I believe it'd be between twenty-one hundred and forty-three hundred dollars a year, because it's not a lot of people in that range at all.
So, we'd save a max of four thousand a year?
More.
If behavior doesn't change. And sometimes people change behavior to get below different cutoffs. So, by changing the cutoff, you're disallowing that from happening.
So, if we change a cutoff, their behavior could go to paying their utility bill two times in one month and staying under two grand each time, right? I could pay it first week and third week, still have all the money in by the fourth. I get my points. I mean, that'd be one way of behavior changing, right? To a negative. It is, it's, it's tough balancing the, the convenience. And if they, if they cut a check, if we have seventy people sending checks in to us, what's the process for checks coming in? Someone collects them, puts them into the system, brings them to a lockbox?
So much slower is it?
Well, it depends on where they're gonna, where it's gonna come in from. So, if it's from a Dropbox, every morning, someone empties out the Dropbox, it goes into finance, we receive those checks that day, and are posted that day, and they're, and they're deposited, and we actually turn them into ACHs, so they're not, they're not live checks like paper checks as we all are used to seeing. They're turned into a, into an ACH and deposited quicker as well. But if that customer is online and using online banking, we have a product called Venco, which allows us to, if you imagine, there's this file kind of in the sky, and all the banks read this file, and they know that the city of Geneva will take an ACH. So, instead of cutting a check out to us, it converts it to an ACH, which once again gets it to us just as quickly as if you cut, actually quicker than if you cut a check.
Is the accounting on your end any different when it comes in to the system as an ACH?
It is much quicker because it's a flat file that's put right in.
Okay.
Versus having to cash receipt it and scan a barcode, which is what you see on your typical bill.
Yeah. What about versus credit card?
Credit card online is the easiest because it just happens. There's no intervention by finance. Credit card, at the counter, would be no different than paying with a check. You have to enter it into the system.
So... So, we're, when we move from credit card to ACH, and then worst-case, check, there is some friction. There is some cost to us, especially with a check, but also ACH.
And it's all, I've, I've based upon it unknown, and we don't know how those habits are going to change. That's, you know, I can't predict what they're gonna do in three months.
If we, if we went down to two thousand a month, you don't anticipate having to hire somebody for three, three hours of...
No.
Okay.
No. It's sixty, like I said, sixty-five credit card transaction on a given, credit transactions on a given month. I don't remember if they're online with E-Suite or if they're in-house, but...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky, then Bruno.
Thank you. Can you clarify the, the sixty-five, the savings was two to four thousand annually or monthly?
Monthly.
Monthly. Okay. You know, I, I still think, you know, when you look at the delay, the payment, the administrative cost involved with it, sixty-five more people, I'm, I'm gonna vote against the amendment just because I, I don't think that moving to two thousand dollars makes a, a lot of sense to me right now. You know, I, I think that the one thousand was well thought out, the amount of people it would affect, and the payback for that. You know, this is gonna cause a lot more work for you, the delayed processing. You know, after you, if it's two thousand dollars a month, and it's seven hundred dollars more a month to do it, and we delay X amount of days, and we're saving a thousand dollars for inconveniencing sixty-five more people, you know, I, we're, we're getting down there a little bit. So, I, I think what you originally proposed made a lot more sense to me. So, I will vote against the amendment. However, I do agree with moving the date up to March 1st, so depending on how the amendment goes, I would reintroduce that for March 1st too. So, thank you.
Alderman Bruno.
After thinking about it, I'm, I'm tending to agree with Alderman Rodecky on the, on the amendment. It seems like there seemed to be a natural break in the distribution. You know, it's nice to fall into that. We can always analyze it. I, I wonder too if there's, if we're looking to transition more users to the auto-pay, if some of these checks or some of these bills paid on credit card, you know, some of these users might not be confident, you know, of just how much is in the, in their checking account at any one time, which might actually, while I don't have the numbers, might actually cause some more problems. I think I would tend to leave the, at least for an initial run, we've substantially cut our credit card processing fees. I, I think I would tend to stay with the original five thousand. Thank you.
Any other questions from the dais? Well, we have an amendment. I think a voice vote would be appropriate. I'm sorry, yes, a roll call.
And who's the second to the amendment?
Second was Rodecky.
This is just on the amendment?
On the amendment. The amendment is to move it to March 1st and change the cutoff from five thousand to two thousand.
Do I have to vote on both of them? I, I like half of it.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Tara Burkhardt?
Nay.
Donald Cummings?
Nay.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Nay.
Craig Maladra?
Nay.
Richard Marks?
Nay.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Nay.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Okay. We're, we're back to the original proposal. I would also offer then to change the implementation date to March 1st as opposed to May 1st and keep the cutoff at five thousand.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Rodecky. Any discussion? Voice vote, I'm sorry, roll call vote on that as well.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Mark?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
And now, we have the original proposal to, to vote on as well. Any discussion on that, or are we ready to vote?
As amended.
As amended, I'm sorry. Roll call vote as well.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 3F, recommend draft ordinances for 2017 general corporate and special service area tax levies. Do I hear a motion? So moved. Moved by Alderman Marks? Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Any discussion? Voice vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 3G, recommend draft ordinances for 2017 annual tax abatements. Do I hear a motion? So moved. Moved by Alderman Marks, seconded by Cummings. Any questions? Vote by, voice vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 3H, recommend draft resolution urging Illinois governor to veto Senate Bill SB-1451 establishing the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act. Do I hear a motion? So moved. Moved by Alderman Bruno? Seconded by Alderman McGowan.